Okay. All right, thank you. We'll move and bring our meeting to order here on Tuesday, May 7th, 7 o'clock. And we move for our first item, and this is a public hearing. This is for Chapel Car Crossing, SGP USPFV.
Whatever that means.
Exactly. So I feel like I'm speaking Klingon.
Less than usual.
Chapel Car Retail Owner LLC. This is a request for a resolution amendment regarding the Rocks Jewelry Gifts, 480 Bedford Road, New York Route 117. So, dig into my magic pot here. So, the reason I understand that we're saying this is that it's an amendment to the TOC for the 1,580 square feet of additional store space.
So before we get too far, you might as well just make a motion to open the public hearing.
Yeah, we should do that.
Boy, are you pushy.
Is there a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So this is, you know, we have the six months from January, basically, TCO timeframe, and this is a request to also be allowed to open before those conditions are satisfied, but it would still be subject to that six-month limit from January 9th.
Right, right, okay. And I think we have in our materials information from our town planner, from the traffic folks, indicating that they agree with the statement from the applicant's traffic people that the impact would be de minimis, no impact in fact. I guess the town board has already approved the extension of the TCO where they have jurisdiction. We don't have jurisdiction of the traffic anyway, so we're sort of just tagging along here.
Internal traffic.
They amended their finding statement, as they have done in the past, to authorize this additional square footage to be opened.
Right, right. So, any questions or issues that we need to raise or think about? I know we have to adopt the seeker statement.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody's here from the public to address this.
Well, I was gonna ask people here, because the public, really, the throngs haven't arrived yet. But, any questions, issues from, you know, members?
Well, what are we gonna do if they have a bigger, you know, a bigger store that comes in which might impact traffic? And they say, oh, it's probably okay, and we still have no say, most likely.
Not on the traffic issue on 117, the external traffic, because we did go through that whole TOC problem, program with those first two extensions, and with Fitness and with, of course, Whole Foods. And we were advisory, but in fact, it was really within the jurisdiction of the town board. So they had to make the findings, they had to amend the findings, they're the ones who had... We still have various sections of our, what would you say, our resolutions that have to be updated and dovetailed, and I think we have some of that here before us, in front of us tonight. But, other than that, we're sort of the tail of this one. It's being wagged by the town, the town board. Okay. So if a larger one comes in, the town board presumably will take that and look at it more carefully, and not that they haven't looked at this carefully, I think they have, it's just that there's just no impact.
Well, there is no large impact, there's a small impact, there has to be, because there's three or four cars.
Right, okay, right, okay. But I guess it was something that even our traffic folks said that they're not, they wouldn't object to. Are there any questions from the public? I think the public is represented by the applicant only. So, in terms of work that we have to do here, we have to adopt the neg deck?
Yeah, I mean, there's three steps, basically. Close the public hearing, consider the neg deck, and consider the resolution.
Okay. So not seeing any comments from the public? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was a four-minute public hearing?
Do we have a record book?
I don't know. Is there a motion to adopt the neg deck that's been prepared by staff?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have a proposed resolution that's been prepared by staff and by council. Any questions, issues, changes on it?
We're gonna make one change on page two to reflect that there was apparently just a single letter, and then it was revised by the applicant.
Okay.
And it's stated correctly, I think, in page four, and we'll just dovetail it the same way.
Okay, fine, great. Okay, any other changes, issues?
No, I have no problem.
Can I ask what line that's on?
It's on line, so it says, on page two, this is, whereas the applicant, by letter, instead of letters, by letter from its council, et cetera, dated April 24, 2019, comma, last revised April 29, 2019. You have it later on, exactly the same way, in the resolution.
Okay. All righty. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all set.
Thank you.
Yep, good luck.
Thanks.
Are you done, Les, or is it?
It was nice of you to drop by.
Thank you. Great cameo with this application, and I'll be back next meeting. Okay, apparently, the Monaco Realty public hearing has been pulled, so we'll move next into our next public hearing, that's for Akipi. This is an application for a site development plan approval for a change of use, 229 King Street, New York Route 120.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have to show it upon...
Yep, yep, thank you. While he's preparing that, I just want to remind everyone that we won that award, we shared the winning of that vote award for the Kupila Building, so, not that I'm paying for it, but we're all invited to go for dinner.
What award? Town expense.
Oh.
It's the Westchester Municipal Planning Federation's Planning Achievement Award.
Planning Achievement Award.
Second year in a row.
So the Kupila, Kupila housing building.
And if you'd like to attend, if you could let me know by the, what is it, Monday the 13th?
It's, yep.
By next Monday. So, I did confirm that it would not be at our expense, I wanted to make sure, before I invited you, so I didn't get stuck in the bill. But in any event, the town...
We can't about that. Well, we'll not, you know...
I wouldn't.
No.
But the town did indicate that they would spring for this, since it's a big award.
Just for board members, not for...
Board members and staff.
And no other guests. Not said, but I don't think so.
It says 125 on the right hand, or to the right?
Yeah, I don't think guests were involved, right? I think, I think we can bring guests, but you have to bring, pay for the guests.
Money. To view.
Turnings have to be allowed.
Anyway, I think it's a nice recognition for what I think was a wonderful solution on that project. Personally, I think it's one of the great models of Westchester.
Oh, you know what, you're in this, you gotta get out of, out of the thing you're in.
Yes.
Go back to home.
That's a charm.
Click on home.
No, it's nice to get that.
Get out, it's complete.
It's a serious thing.
Well, we get a number two, a motion to open the public hearing, a motion to open.
Yes, okay, well, we're getting ready, yeah, good idea, thank you. Two in a row, huh? Is there a motion to open a public hearing? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I can't get myself into this now, I'm sorry.
Cal, do you know how to open it?
Up on the way.
All right, here we go, here we go.
Very sorry.
Much more expert than I am.
That's why I moved to Cal.
We just got a zoom. Zoe, is there a certain page that you're...
This is all we really need.
Okay, let's figure it out.
We're just have to rotate.
I think I have a view to rotate.
Okay.
They actually show these projects.
There was no routine.
They'll go up the speech, and so on, that's about right.
Okay.
That'd be pretty good.
And, why don't you wanna make a quick...
Using plus minuses?
Yeah, I don't know what... Usually, they do come as slide shows, and give presentations with photos of each of the projects.
Yeah, a brief summary of the project.
Thank you very much.
It's usually, it's a nice night.
It is, it is a nice night. Okay. Sorry, we're talking about our dinner. Highly inappropriate, you know, whatever.
All right, what we have here is the revised site plan showing the various elements that were requested.
Right.
Show the various light fixtures that are on the building, these have been here for years, as well as the existing sign, which is on King Street, and there's also a similar one on Marble at the entrance off of Marble. I was also requested to put in the various variances that this building has already, and one of the variances is set back, front set back, and the other has to do with the two signs that we put up. And as far as I know, that's everything that we needed.
Yep. Cal, did you, did we confirm that the lighting plan is okay, it shines only on the location? I mean, obviously, as the applicant has said, it's been there forever. Might be the original light bulbs.
I wouldn't be surprised. But the...
The everyday changes.
Can you answer that question again?
Whether or not, we've confirmed that the lights, as currently set up, shine only on the property and don't flow out all sides.
Spill out.
Preparations, don't spill out, that's the word, thank you.
I don't think that's a real look at that.
Okay.
Well, just so, just so you know, this light...
Do you mind, can you just grab the microphone? You can stay up at the computer, but just grab the microphone.
Yeah, you can actually move.
Thank you.
All right, so this light fixture here is based on, there's an entrance into the apartment from here, this walk here, so that shines on the walk and the steps that are there. This light here, which is basically over the, on the second floor, over the entrance into the yard, which is the, I think that's an question, shines directly on the parking area. And then the third one, that's on the tree, which is off of Maple, does a couple of things. It takes care of the light in this whole area here, as well as shine down onto the parking area. I'm sure it doesn't shine that much, but enough to get them down and up without an issue. And that's pretty much it.
Yep.
So to the extent, I'm sorry. By the photographs... Here we go, sorry. From the photographs, they aren't, there are no shrouds on the fixtures, so to keep light from spilling on the...
Correct. What you see is what they had.
They also look like they are adjustable at the same time.
They are, correct.
So, I wonder if it would be prudent to check and to see to the extent that they, that they do or don't shine on the neighbor's property. I suspect that they do, because I suspect they were installed without that being a consideration back then.
Most likely.
So, the easiest thing to do would be to adjust them downward. I don't know whether that gives you, if you do that, I don't know whether that gives you enough light on the property, but I think that that is something that, I don't know how we proceed on that, but I hate to ask you to come back on this. I don't know whether it could be conditional of an approval, or what we can do about that.
Yeah, I think that it's already been approved previously, and Sabrina, I'm assuming, checked this, and it's pre-existing, so I think that she considered it to be, you know, okay to proceed.
Well, I'm sure it was pre-existing, but it seems to me that we have a new application. This is the opportunity to tidy up things, since we're doing with variances. So this might be an opportunity that we would, as Tom said, either put a shroud around this, something around there, filter downwards, just to make sure. It might require no change whatsoever, it might be perfectly fine. It would just be good to have it in the record, make sure that we had that checked.
It also might require another, new fixtures.
Yep.
So we can add as a condition to be satisfied prior to the issuance of a CO, that the applicant confirm that the site lighting is remaining on the site.
And there's no spillage off-site.
The applicant confirm, and town staff?
Yep, town staff will check, will verify.
Expect, right?
Okay. That sounds certainly reasonable. Okay, all right, good. And I think, someone was piled, we've reduced it down to a single variance at this point, right? I think it's a two-car variance for parking that you have to go to the ZBA for, and of course, that will be one of our conditions as well. We've agreed to waive, is it two or three spots?
Two spots.
Two spots that we have the right to waive, and I think we all agreed last time when we looked at it, that these are complementary uses of the, of the building, and that this would be a fair thing to do, and to waive those two. But we couldn't get you all the way there, we don't have the ability, so you have to go to ZBA for that one.
So I'm just, is it a two-car variance or a three-car?
It's, it's, it's needed, it needs 12, and we're taking it to 10, so.
Well, it's, it's...
It's on the, it's in the resolution.
We're allowed to do up to 15 percent.
Yes.
And there's 15 parking spaces that are mandated to begin with before you make subtraction, so.
Yes.
15 percent of 15 is 2.25 cars.
You're taking the 12, and then they're going to the ZBA for the 10.
So this board is considering the waiver of three parking spaces. Three. To go from 15 to 12, and then to get from 12 to the 10 that they're providing, they're going to seek a variance from the zoning.
Apologies, I meant three, not two.
So we round up?
It sounds like we round up.
Right, you always round up on the parking.
Okay.
Yeah, you always... I should've asked that question first.
Always go higher, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Good. All right, any other questions? Issues from, for us? Anything else, Bob? I had no comments, okay. All right. Are you here for this application?
For picky.
Okay. Any comments for the public on the application?
See anybody. It's been good evening.
Yep, well, not seeing any public comment. Should we close the public hearing?
Motion to close?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have to adopt a neg deck on this?
It's two actions.
So we don't need it? No action, okay, great. So we have a proposed resolution before us, and we've had a chance to look at this. Any changes, questions, issues on the resolution? Okay, if not, is there a motion to adopt the resolution as prepared?
So moved.
As amended. Including the condition about...
Yes. Right, good, good, thank you. Yep, about the lighting, yep, thank you. As amended, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved, as amended.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yep, take care. Okay, we move now to our next public hearing, and that's for Lamoney. This is an application for a steep slope permit, tree removal permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan approval for legalization of an unauthorized disturbance at 402
Mr. Chairman, I could get going while Seth's pulling up the plan, if that's okay?
Sure.
Good evening.
Is this our first?
A motion, yeah.
Is it our first time edit? Okay. Is there a motion then to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Almost got it.
Almost.
It's encouraging, isn't it? Oh, well. Sorry, sorry, Brad.
No problem. Good evening, for the record, Brad Schwartz from Zerrin and Steinmes, we represent the applicant, based upon our motion. We're glad to be here tonight for the public hearing. Our whole team is here, are there any questions about the plan? I know we've been here multiple nights, and we've had multiple site visits, but because it is a public hearing, we are prepared to give a very brief, short overview of the project, as well as to just bring you up to speed as to what additions to the plans have been made since our last site visit.
Right, that'd be good. Because I think we had a number of issues that we raised during the site visit, so it'd be great to hear what we've done.
Great, no response to that. Hi, I'm Seth Tyserst. Just to give you a brief summary of the plan, we've tried to create a richly diverse landscape consisting of meadows, riparian buffers, native plant beds, bioretention basins, a very rich, diverse variety of plant material. That all actually consists of 75 trees, 2,164 shrubs, 18,320 perennials, and 26,200 plugs for the meadow. In addition to the plant material, we're proposing to make modifications to the stone channel by widening it in different locations, as well as removing some of the stones on the bottom of the channel so that water can percolate into the soil. We're also adding check dams as the channel works its way down the hill to reduce erosion. Some of the changes that we've made since our last site walk, I'm just gonna move over here. Per Steve Coleman's request, we've added 1,000 ferns in this location. Over here, we're planning to remove invasive species, and that's more native plant material. And then we've also increased quantities of plant material along the St. Line Channel.
The invasive's down the corner, you're gonna just, we're gonna go into the other property, were you?
Yeah.
We talked about that.
We are gonna go into the other property.
Oh, you are?
Yes, that's right. So, in addition to the planting and the modifications to St. Line Channel, we're also proposing lots of stormwater management practices, and Barry Naderman can tell us a little bit more about that.
Good evening, all, Barry Naderman, Naderman Land Plant Engineering. Okay, I'll use this overall plan as a, as a reference. Certainly, first of all, there were some comment memos from Professor Seoie, and we've incorporated much more detailed drainage designs, rims, inverts, sizes, elevation to the infiltration basins, all that detailed stuff. And we also had, of course, the field walk with the board, and some of the comments that were issued, raised at the board were also incorporated into our resubmission, one of which was providing railroad type water board, water bars along portions of that mulch path that was suggested by Steve Coleman. And they've also been provided on the lower section, closest to Sorrel Street, and that was to encourage that water coming down here to get into the swell on the uphill side of that path, and get into that drainage system, which was the last point, checkpoint before discharging offsite. We did provide more details on the access, this portion of the access drive that's gonna be off of Sorrel Street, and it's again important to note that this is not a residential driveway access, it's not to be used by conventional vehicles whatsoever. This is strictly a maintenance access for the property. Will that be gated? It could be gated, further back, though. But I don't think we're gonna do anything that's on the street itself. Right now, you may recall, there's a fence that goes right across through here, goes through there, and there was a gate there, so my guess is we're gonna shift that gate over to where the new alignment of the driveway's going to be.
So that's going to be a road cut, or what would you consider it?
Well, if it's not used frequently in the past, I don't think the zoning board had much issues with it, but I don't know, if it is, whether you wanna make it official and send it to the board, so they can make an interpretation on it. Second curb cuts usually require, is EDA.
Oh, for variance.
It's not a... So I mean, you can make it official. It's not a residential curb cut, it's a, it's simply a maintenance, maintenance access. Right, but I still think, in the past, there was one, Lendale, and the building inspector did send it to the board just to get it official on record and memorialized. I would recommend.
Okay.
I agree. Makes sense.
Yeah, I think, we'd have to take a look at it, I'm not gonna give an opinion tonight, but we'd have to take a look at it.
Okay. You may recall, we were making some improvements that were along Sorrel Street, one of which was going to be this little basin we were gonna carve out at the head wall of that 15-inch covert going into the street, and it was noted right there that there was a tree that was right there that wasn't in good shape, but chances are, with the extra activation, it was gonna, it was gonna go. So we did indicate that to be removed. We did provide on the main access to the site, on the north end, you may recall that there was some water seepage that was getting across the driveway, the residential driveway, before it got to the northern end, where there's gonna be a swell and a reconstructed catch basin. We've also provided an additional catch basin just on the south side of that driveway to grab that water before it crosses the driveway and bring it right into the drainage system.
So that will take that water underneath the driveway?
Yes.
And you pipe it underneath it?
That'll be piped, it'll be piped underneath, and it'll discharge right into that same catch basin that we're rehabilitating.
Okay, to the north.
To the north, yep. We also noted that, that there was some cleanup work to do on those existing catch basins. There was another, there was another crossing that was noted right in the middle.
Yes.
Okay? And we did locate that on the plan, that was not something that was predominantly covered up, so we did note that on the plan that that's gonna be cleaned out, and...
Well, I think we also noted that it needed to be cleaned out, but I thought we talked about building some sort of structure to hold the earth back, because it was quite deep. That drain was down about a foot, foot and a half.
Well, we, yeah, we were, excavate that out a little bit, and we're gonna stabilize that with root wrap or stone or something, because right there, the embankment goes up pretty sharply, so it's not that we can excavate a big area and provide a catch basin-type structure at that location. Well, I would, just so you know, I would run that by Mr. Marchell, because he might want something a little bit more secure.
Okay.
And I would think, loud on this, that he would want some sort of structure coming up to grade, eliminate the drop-off by the road. Well, we'll get him out there and take a look. So I would definitely, definitely make the call on that.
Now, I mean, was that the spot where I made the tongue-in-cheek comment about taking the stones off the wall and blow the structure? Is that the one you're talking about? It was down on that curve, right?
I think it was.
Yeah, it was, yeah. On here, it's shown right, sort of right in front of the house, that little red mark there, that's where that was...
I was trying to get the right spot in my head.
Right, that's the one. It is the one. Oh, so right where the, the water course, the drainage course that runs across the northern end of the property and through here, right where it discharges just offsite into this area, it was suggested that that area be cleaned out a little bit, and modified and planted, and that would act as one final settling basin before the water discharges into that covert that goes under Sorrel Street.
Right.
Steve suggested that.
Steve was very anxious about that, yeah.
Yep, so we did, we did incorporate that into the plan.
What's the protocol for doing stuff on another piece of property?
I think they actually own it, too.
Yeah.
Oh, so, okay. I think it's a separate lot, but it's the same owner.
It's a separate lot, but same owner, okay. You had permission from the owner, too.
You have permission from the owner.
Anyway, so, that's basically the crux of how the plan evolved from where it was before, aside from all the additional detailed information that we provided, Bob, on the construction drawings themselves.
You know, I think we noted during the site visit that, and I don't know if this has been accounted for in the tree survey, but it looked like some of those big, giant old oaks were impacted by all the work on the grass, et cetera. Have they been counted now toward the loss of trees and for tree replacement?
I don't know.
So there were perhaps a half dozen of those that clearly were not going to make it, and had been adversely impacted by all the work.
Yeah, we, we need to take another look at that, just to verify.
Now that they'll be, they might be leafed out.
Yeah.
Give us an idea.
They weren't leafing out.
If they made it.
The park was pilling wide, they were barely impacted. I mean, you need to check with Steve on that.
Sure.
Because he was the one who really noted it, and I think he was concerned with it and said, whether they go this season, it'll be next season, it's just a matter of time.
I'll contact.
And those are rather significant DTH.
Yeah.
No problem.
It's unfortunate, we saw several impacted, but that's where it goes.
Okay, we'll take a look.
All right. Bob, do you want to talk to the, speak to the, and help us a little bit with the DEP situation?
Yeah, I met Jean-Marc of DEP when we were discussing a improvement project on Shore Mill, and we received a letter from him as well regarding the DEP involvement now because of disturbance is over five acres. And I mentioned that to Barry too as well, so they're going to have to prepare a full SWIP, which DEP will have to review and sign off on as well, in addition to the stormwater management report that we have looked at over the past several months. So, he's going to be focusing on water quality, and I mentioned this in discussion with Barry about water quality is based on new and previous, there was no new and previous, so I'm not quite sure how DEP is going to get their hands around that. I'll leave that up to Barry and Jean-Marc.
Jean-Marc made a, yeah, they made a comment sort of about, well, what about grass clippings and leaves? Well, okay, there's other ways that we can handle that, which are quite simplified. Each one of those little drainage structures can have a hooded outlet, they call it, or a snout, I think that's a common name for them, and I don't believe when that grass is mowed that there's, frankly, I'll have to check with the landscaper, that there's very many clippings floating around out there, to be honest with you.
Well, isn't the mowing going to be once or twice a year? It's going to be a meadow.
Well, in those meadow areas, sure, that's a different story.
So, you're not going to have, maybe they're anticipating it's going to be just pure lawn, and so you're going to be cutting it every week and grass clipping, so.
We still have to give them a little bit more of an education on what's actually going to happen out there, because there's a lot of restoration going on.
So, when you mow a meadow once or twice a year, there's a lot more material which is deposited from that activity as opposed to mowing a lawn once a week. Usually, mowers will make mulch out of the grass anyway. So, how do you manage the waste from the?
Well, the larger, the larger material can easily be raked out of the material that's left there, and given the manicure protocols for the property, I think they're going to want to not leave all that stuff laying around. And if there's any littler stuff that isn't picked up by the rake or by hand, then you still have substantial ground cover that keeps that in place.
I believe too, DEP will always require the declaration from Lamont about maintenance of the stormwater, above and beyond what we have, because this is residential, we don't require it by the code. However, the DEP, I'm sure, will do that, and that will be all probably outlined and specified in the maintenance procedures for the stormwater.
So, when that's done by DEP, then do we then incorporate it also, make sure on a local basis it's followed through?
We could, we can have it, have them reported as well. DEP does make them reported too. They are very similar to what we are on subdivisions.
Yeah, we haven't worked out those details with the DEP yet.
Right.
But what will be, what will be, will be. But the bottom line is, I don't think substantively it's going to change the plantings, the mitigation that we're providing.
Right.
If there's a little tweaking here and there to give a little extra cleanup of grass clippings and leaves, then that can be handled pretty easily.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, Bob, you had a couple of points?
Basically, I'll go with them quickly.
Yep.
As in my previous files, I recommend the same thing, do the extensive nature of the stormwater facility, keep in mind our code generally doesn't require any type of maintenance, performance guarantees for residential, but I think because of the extent of this, I would recommend one, ST two.
Yep.
That would be similar in fashion, we can dump down what the EC needs, DEP needs as well.
Do we all support that?
It's up to the board, they have to.
Yeah, exactly.
I can make it by code, but you have the discretion to.
What do board members think about that? I think it's a good idea, something of this nature and size and scope.
I think it's fine for, you know, the meadows and vegetation that's been put back in. And when we get to some of the off-site things, I want to understand how those might work, but.
Well, the off-site is, what I'd recommend as far as maintenance performance, the off-site on the roadway could be treated, obviously, as town improvements, and they would have to put up a bond for that anyway. And I would recommend a separate bond for the work that Jerry needs out there.
Yes.
And have that separate standalone for the work on-site, and have two separate maintenance bonds and two maintenance bonds to keep it clean. And keep in mind, Stephen might have those as well for the plantings, so you might have three.
Right.
We may have to, we may have to talk about the maintenance bond for the roadwork, because frankly, those are improvements that we predominantly offered up as.
Yes.
And.
Especially ones really off-site, too.
It's partly because the highway department hasn't done a very good job of maintaining those structures and maintaining the swells and things like that, but once these improvements are made, we're certainly, as with any town road, we're hoping that the town will take over those.
I would agree with that, and I think for, you know, once they're made and they're done and they're in place, you know, then the town has to take them over.
Oh, absolutely. Basically, the maintenance bond is to guarantee the construction, and then basically when it's built, accepted and as-built by the town, Jerry, based on his permit, then you put up a maintenance bond for two years, that's what we generally do for any type of town roadway improvement. So, I would recommend that.
So, it's not, it's not a.
Who puts up the two-year bond for roadwork?
The applicant. Anytime you're doing roadway improvements, that's going to be part and parcel of the town, you require a two-year maintenance bond.
Well, but to me, it's a, you know, the applicant is paying for the improvement, in part because it helps facilitate what's going on on the site, but I would think that once we've made the road better, then it's up to the town to take care of. I don't see why there's a maintenance bond for two years.
Well, the maintenance bond is to cover the quality and workmanship of the contractor doing the work that was.
Okay, so it's not for maintenance?
No, no, no. It's not. The maintenance bond is to cover the workmanship and quality of the reconstruction.
So, I guess it's specifically for any malfunctions of, right, you know, but if the town plow creams a catch basin or something.
Then there'll be a discussion between Jerry or whatever.
It is not that it's called a maintenance bond, it seems to me, it ought to be some, like a construction bond or something.
Yeah, well, that's what we typically call it.
It seems oddly term, but it is what it is, right?
That's what we call it. Maybe it's not the best thing, but.
Okay, as long as that's.
But that's the intent.
Okay, as long as it's kept clear in the resolution that.
We can always bore that out.
Two-year maintenance bond is to maintain the structure, save, you know, external.
It was the specific work.
We can outline that when Jennifer reviews it, and I'll.
Okay, excellent. That works.
We'll work together on that, right, Jennifer? So, that's ST two and ST three.
Right, but I think the gist is that we support that, that's what we.
You have to, because I can't make it myself out of these codes, because you have the discretion.
Yeah, so, I agree.
Yep, you do. And I have three general comments. We have to require, obviously, a street open curb right from the public works, and what we were just talking about before, maintenance protection, traffic control plans should be provided for the roadway improvements as well. And GC three, once the Sorrel Street drainage improvements have been reviewed and approved by the town, is recommended that engineers' courses estimate be submitted for review. I think probably the performance bond, and maintenance bond is what we're discussing with people. And that's it.
Yep. And we have a memo from Steve Coleman on behalf of the ERB, but I think the gist of this is basically everything has been resolved, and I think they're satisfied with the various conditions and I guess the meeting that you had with ERB. So, the, I don't understand, one issue I don't understand, I don't know if the applicant's agreeable to it, and that's point number ten. The ERB is requesting a letter be provided from the applicant that confirms that Benedict and Ticehurst are retained to carry out the ten-year monitoring and maintenance plan. I don't know if we're getting involved with labor contracts, but great, but I don't know if we can make that a condition.
That caught my attention as well, and I'll discuss that with Mr. Coleman and Jennifer to work that out. I don't think we need to leave without your time.
Yeah, right.
That caught my eye.
That was odd.
He must be a lawyer, too.
As much as we all love Seth and Glenn, I'm not sure we think.
Well, I mean, yeah. Full employment act up here, huh? Okay.
Seth, Glenn might retire.
You can't, you have to stay for ten years. Right here and writing.
If I could make it up that hill.
There you go.
Okay, any questions, comments from board members? Any comments, questions for the public on this application? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Now, we need a resolution?
I don't think we have a resolution, do we, on this?
No.
No.
Not yet.
So, we'll direct staff to prepare a resolution, and we'll have that prepared, if you wish to come for that. It's really exciting. You don't want to miss it, but.
But it's, but I don't know that, how, when do we pass the resolution, before or after they work out everything with DEP? Because if DEP makes changes, then we really wouldn't want them to start doing a whole bunch of things, you know, under our approval.
What we've done in the past, we'll put a condition in there where if DEP approves it and there's any significant changes to the plan that was approved by the planning board, they have to come back to the board.
Yeah, so the risk, yeah, the risk is really on the applicant.
Right.
Okay.
To start over, not start over, but, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
To reopen it.
Exactly.
Just a recommendation.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. Okay, good. So, we'll see you in a couple of weeks. One, do you think we can have the resolution? Can we have it for the 21st?
Yes, we can.
For the next.
Okay.
Want it? Does that work?
Is that okay, Jennifer? For the next, our next meeting?
Staff couldn't turn around.
You know, for several days in advance.
Right.
Yeah.
That's the question.
Okay, good. Well, it's easy for Kellen to agree to, because, you know, Sabrina will have to do it, so it's good.
You say Brad will write it if it helps.
I have it, dude.
I bet you do. Okay, so.
Thank you.
See you then on the 21st.
Great, good night.
Thanks so much. Okay, we move to our next item, and that's an informal hearing for a pending application. This is LaSalle, the application for a site development plan approval for accessory apartment and accessory apartment at forty-eight Quaker Bridge Road.
Hey, guys, did you leave your?
Brad, do you want your?
Drive?
Drive?
Ah, there we go. There's somebody who wants it.
Thanks. You didn't want to see the other stuff you got.
Yeah. The real stuff, huh? Where it doesn't work? Great.
Yeah.
There you go. Good, so if you could summarize the, all the various changes that you've incorporated since we last met.
Sure.
Some nice improvements here.
Yeah, we, again, just Corey Salamone for the record, here tonight on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. LaSalle, they're here with me this evening as a project engineer, Ralph Alfonzetti. As you'll recall, this is forty-eight Quaker Bridge Road, approximately one and a half acres, and we are two-way zone, and when we were last here before you, this is for the accessory apartment for the cottage, and there's a lot of pre-existing non-conformities on the site, and so the conversation revolved around, you know, what we can do to mitigate the three hundred twenty-four square feet that we're adding to the cottage, and can we bring some of the coverage numbers down and reduce the number of variances we needed? We also touched on screening as well. So, what we've done is, as I said, we're adding three hundred and twenty-four feet to the cottage. So, we identified, you know, a building in the northeast corner of the site that we could remove, and that ended up being eighty square feet. So, we're still increasing the building coverage and the FAR by two hundred and forty-four square feet, but it's less than what we were. And then by removing numerous walkways, gravel, patios, the barbecue area, we're able to get rid of about fourteen hundred square foot of development coverage, which brings us below what's existing now, so we were able to reduce one of the variances.
I brought you within conformance.
Yes.
When you, you get rid of the stucco building, which I thank you for, that's, I like that idea, and that's eighty square feet, I remember, and does all the concrete work around it and flagstone stuff go away, too?
Correct. Anything that's hatched on the plan is what's being taken away.
Okay, okay.
That's part of that fourteen hundred.
That's part of the fourteen hundred, correct. Correct. In addition, we provided you with photographs of the screening around the pool from inside the property looking towards the street, and then from the street as well, you can see how screened that is. We have discussed arborvitae along the southern property line.
What's this structure up here? I think it's remaining. I couldn't tell even from the pictures, it's behind the house and up close to the lawn. It's kind of a lone structure.
It's a root cellar.
It's like, it's a root cellar. Okay. And that's going to stay?
Yes.
Okay.
Water treatment.
Well, the water treatment is in the root cellar.
It's in the root cellar, yeah.
So, with that, we're here to answer any questions that you have, and if you're, or deemed appropriate, to give a referral over to the ZBA.
Yep, okay. Bob, you had some comments?
I have one comment with the parking, the proposed parking to show on the driveway turnaround. I think it was going to be kind of tight, in my opinion, with the cars making a left around that turnaround if they need to, so I recommended that they take off some of the asphalt. I submitted a little sketch. I recommend that, because it might be kind of tight to get a passenger vehicle around that left turn.
I did see your sketch. I think we would have to actually add pavement there to make, to increase the width a little bit.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry, that's my.
I mean, if that's, if that's something.
If you didn't add the pavement on the grass, I don't think it's going to bring it over the thousand.
No, it won't, it won't bring us over.
It's a small amount.
It's a very small amount. It will, it will make the circulation better, so we, you know.
No problem.
It shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah. It breaks it, yeah, within compliance of the thirteen-foot.
Yeah, see, one day triple wires for the thousand, it'd be a small amount of asphalt to be added.
Right. Makes sense.
Yeah, that's my mistake.
Okay. Kellen, Sabrina had some comments you want to run through there?
Sure. So, comment number one, the property is pre-existing non-conforming, it's a one point five three acres. Comment number two, the applicant has indicated that this space is used for storage, the, and is now proposed for removal, the storage, the space, the structure located behind the garage. And then parking, comment number three, parking spaces on-site plan, zoning conformance table, the spaces are located in the zoning conformance table. However, only one space is required for an accessory apartment, and the spaces are still not shown on the site plan, so.
No, I think when you zoom in on the plan, even in what the engineer circulated, the blow-up.
They did show them. They, they could probably remove one, but I still think in my mind that they'd add additional.
Okay, yeah. We only need one, but if you want to show two.
But we, I mean, we have, we showed four, we did dimension, and they are on the plan.
That's your priority.
Show more than what's required, yeah.
I'll make sure she sees that.
Okay.
So, zoning conformance, the zoning conformance table on the site plan appears to reference one of the cottage. This has been amended. Coverage, as you indicated, there's a reduction to remove the eighty square feet structure, and then this will reduce the total building coverage to fifty, forty-one square feet, and then the requested three hundred twenty-four square feet of the proposed cottage, and then this will bring the total building coverage amount to fifty-three, sixty-five, and it would require a variance, but less than what you approved, requested.
Exactly.
And then the development coverage is pre-existing, it is over, but you are reducing that by reducing the walkways and the impervious surfaces by thirteen, twenty-three.
So, a variance will not be required on development.
Because that is pre-existing.
Right.
And so, secret's type two action, and then the support from the planning board.
Yep.
I think that's all.
Good, thank you, Kellen. Thank you, Kellen. Any comments, questions?
No.
Thoughts? Any thoughts in terms of, are you scheduled yet with ZBA?
No, we need you guys to refer us.
Oh, okay.
To get there.
So, is there any inclination to send a referral to the zoning board with an endorsement? I mean, with all the work that's been done here?
I, I would agree to that.
Okay. I think you guys have done a nice job in terms of reducing these exposures.
I, I, sorry, I do have one question. On the FAR, the, the table on the drawings says that the proposed, it's, it's actually not stated as FAR, it's just square feet. It's not stated as a ratio. FAR is floor area ratio. And so, what is the proposed floor area ratio? You have square feet here, but there's a mathematical calculation that shows the ratio of the amount of development to the site size.
I don't have that off the top of my head.
Because it looks like there's, there's actually quite, it's actually, it's, it's the percentage increase from the existing isn't a lot, but the, from what's actually allowed is quite a bit. And is, is that, that apparently, because it's pre-existing, it's, it's, they didn't get it back to the existing, right, FAR, because it's a bigger building, right? So, that has to go to zoning, right?
Correct.
ZBA.
Yeah, we need four variances. Building coverage.
We need variance for that.
FAR, and two setbacks, rear, rear inside.
Right. So, I, I'm just not so quick to say that, well, only because it's only an increase of this much, so much, which is actually not a lot, over the existing, which is really out of conformance. I know it's pre-existing, so it's actually within conformance, but with respect to the whole neighborhood and the new development, so on and so forth, it's, it's taking it even farther out of, out of context with regard to the existing zoning. And I'm not, I'm not entirely sure that, why would we be so quick to say yes to that? I mean, it's, to me, it's aggravating the problem, that, or aggravating the problem that maybe we shouldn't be so quick to say to the zoning board, we don't care about that.
So, I think you made this point in your comments, but I just want to make sure that we're clear, that the delta that we're looking at is really the addition of the 244 square feet, because they're allowed to have, the existing FAR that they have, they're allowed to have because it's pre-existing.
Right. And they're increasing the FAR by, it's probably.
Whatever that calculation is.
Maybe even de minimis, but still, I mean, nobody's done the calculation.
I just want to make sure.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
I get that. Thank you.
Yeah, I thought you made that point, but I just wanted to make sure that it was clear.
And the 80 square feet for the building that you're going to demolish is included in the calculation?
Correct, because we're increasing the cottage by 324 square feet. We're removing 80, so the delta there is, is where we come with the 244.
Good.
I mean, again, I would argue that that 244 is de minimis.
So, if you were.
What's?
Right, understood. So, if, if you were, were not increasing the FAR, you would be grandfathered in, is that right? They wouldn't have to go for a variance?
Correct.
But still.
Well, I have to go for this rear and side yard setbacks, no matter what.
No, for the FAR.
But as far as the FAR, correct.
So, if you took away another 224, that other variance would go away.
If I got, 244, then I, if I could find two more, 244, then.
Of structure.
Yeah, of, of building.
Building.
Then that would be, the building coverage would go away, as would FAR.
But one of the other, I think one of the other factors is, is also to realize that the proposed cottage is, is already sort of up, and, you know, there's a stop work order on it, so it's not really disturbing any more groundwork. It's already there to that extent. I agree with Tom, it's aggravating, and of course, it is going above, but at the same token, I think in this particular case, there's, you know, a lot of mitigation to, to reduce that, which is, I think, very positive. And again, the 244 square feet, it's, it's really there already, because you're worried about the platform, right? I don't, I don't.
Yeah.
It's a basement, it's just a.
Foundation, just slab.
Slab.
Correct.
And, and the building is half up, or, I guess it's all framed down.
It's all framed down, yeah. We need to put windows and then finish it off.
Yeah, and finish it.
Yeah. And again, we're adding significant screening on the southern border.
That, that doesn't compel me, that.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't find that a compelling reason, but, you know, I will agree, it's, it's, the numbers are de minimis, so it's probably at this point, you know, it's for the ZBA to decide.
Right.
It's hard for us to have an objection with such little extra impact.
Right, right.
Is this site now maxed out?
Well, that's a.
Can the applicant come back in two years and build more?
I think we should put a codicil in that it is maxed out.
I think we should too. On the coverage, building and land, the whole kit and caboodle.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that. Does the applicant have a problem?
No, I, look, we, we've done our best to try to meet you, you know, we, we've really tried.
Yeah.
And, sorry, yeah, I mean, look, we, we've tried our best to, you know, we heard with you.
Sorry.
So, look, we, I wasn't here the last time, my wife was, but.
Please introduce yourself for the.
I'm Frank LaSalle, I'm co-owner of the property.
Yep.
So, thanks for seeing us. Look, you know, we've, we've really tried our best to try to, you know, meet you, meet what your requests were as much as we can. I think net 1,900 square feet is, is what we can do. We also appreciate the fact that, you know, you noticed the, the curve on the driveway. That is, that is troublesome, but we were willing to give that up as, as rough as it is for us. So, any, anything you can give us to, to make it smaller for, for safety and for the order of business would be great, but if that's the, if you feel that that's where we need to be, we're, we're willing to accept it.
Okay, but we say, at least what I'm thinking about, as a maximum, that's it.
Yeah.
That would be a net maximum, so that if you ever wanted to build another structure.
Yeah, we'd have to.
You would have to take down something.
Right. No, we understand that. So, we, we will take down the part of the shed that's in the back, that's fine, we'll take down the flat. We've, we've walked through the property, and I think we can agree. And any lenience you can give us on the circle would be appreciated if we're going to agree to a net max, because that really is problematic for the car.
This is just for FAR.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. Questions, comments, anything else? If not, can we move this forward to a public hearing?
We need to get the variance before you can have a public hearing.
You can schedule the public hearing contingent on them receiving their variances, so that way they don't have to come back in order to schedule a public hearing.
Sure. And again, condition upon that.
Exactly.
I'll take that.
So, referral and then schedule a public hearing.
Right. So, what I would propose is that we, I don't think we'll be able to see any more information or material, so I would propose that we schedule for the 21st. I mean, I talked to Suprema about this before, she thought the 21st would be okay for a public.
When, when can they go before the?
Yeah, well, they go to ZBA by then.
No. But we can't do a schedule of public before they go to ZBA?
You'll probably want to keep the public open until the ZBA acts on the variances, unless you want to.
Just condition on, on approval from the ZBA. I mean, I don't think it's really jumping out in front, because if they don't get the variance, they can't move forward. Just trying to streamline it for the applicant. I mean, you know, the other issue on this is that this was a, as I recall, that this was a medical issue as well.
Correct.
With a family member, so it's, it is a little bit of, if we can try to work with the applicant, I think would be appropriate in this case.
Yeah, that's an option that's available to you.
Again, I, I mean, nothing happens until they go to ZBA and get it approved. And I would be happy to outline to the ZBA that the applicant has worked with us and reduced this exposure rather significantly, and try to give them some sort of endorsement to, to get it through.
That'd be great.
All right, so scheduling a future public hearing meeting would be for the 21st, am I?
Would the idea be to have a draft resolution?
A draft resolution, yeah, I'm ready. I, I think so.
As soon as they get to ZBA?
Exactly.
Perfect, that's wonderful.
Okay. We can't do any better.
Yeah, no, you, absolutely not. That's good.
Well, wait a minute. Janice has raised a question that, now, there's no, there's no extra submittals that would grant for it.
Right.
Just making the resolution, so the question is, the staff have the time to make the resolution?
I only, I only go by what Suprema told me. She said, she tried, she said go for the 21st.
Is it, apologies, is it May 21st or June? Okay, our daughter is graduating from college on May 21st, do we have to be here for the public hearing?
Nope.
I'll be here.
Okay, so if it's okay, we, we, obviously, we'll be with our daughter graduating if that's okay, so, okay.
I would go with that preference too.
Should we put a draft resolution?
Yeah, I know, I went out on a limb there, I know, but I just wanted to.
If she changes that, then maybe she wants to come here instead. This is an education.
Every time.
Okay. Success.
So, I rely on you guys to tell me if you think you'll get drafts ready.
It may have a holdup.
Yeah, I'll do the next one.
You know, it might be too tight.
Actually, anything you submit is mostly done. There is nothing.
There's nothing to submit.
Nah, I guess.
Is that, is that livable or not?
Let's try it.
Thank you.
Let's try as we will make all best efforts to have it available for the 21st.
Okay, do you want to also schedule the same thing for the first week in June? You know, just in case that, because otherwise, we have a two-week delay if it doesn't happen, so.
Right. We'll let you know if, I mean, we'll let you know in advance if we run into problems.
June is reserved for chapel park crossing.
Oh, chapel park crossing. Oh, my goodness.
So, we'll, we'll make sure it gets.
Okay, so we will stay with our plan, we'll try to get May 21st, May 21st, and.
Get you, our hair, vice versa.
Okay?
Thank you very much. Wonderful, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to close the meeting?
No. May I just?
Sure.
Referral to the ZBA as well?
Yes, yeah, we'll do that, yeah, with an endorsement.
How, we're going to deliver our endorsement letter? We have the, Janice, we have who we're going to deliver it to, goes to ZBA, goes to the applicant.
Do you want me to have you just, the chairman, for what I write and then send it to them?
Yep. Okay, we, do we have to endorse the D, do that, or?
If you were to, I don't care.
In support.
Do you want that?
So, so Janice will prepare a, a letter referring the application to the zoning board of appeal, the zoning board of appeals with a positive recommendation on the variances. The chairman is authorized to renew that recommendation and sign off on it prior to it going to the zoning board. Is that, is there consensus on that?
I agree with that. I think that's very kind of him to volunteer to do that.
Very consensus.
Okay.
All right, so there's three of us anyway.
I'll do it.
Okay.
Do you want an actual motion on it?
Sure.
Let's have.
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I recuse myself on the vote.
So, I just thought that I would report, and maybe you all have, some of you, maybe all of you are up to speed on all of this, and it's technically really not one of our functions to be involved in, I think, this particular issue, but I went to the, the Westchester Airport Advisory Board meeting, the latest one they had over at, at the airports a couple of weeks ago. And it was, it was very, very interesting. Maybe you all know that there's, it's become an emerging, like noise has become an emerging problem more so than it was before for residents, and it has to do with the increase in flights, so on and so forth. And there was a presentation there, which was just really, really informative, actually put together by one of the, two of the board members, one of whom was our representative from Newcastle on the board. But I, I understand that there are, that our town board is really getting involved and having a, taking their voice to our voice, to the county supervisor's office, and really promoting our concerns in, in a lot of different venues. And you see this in the local paper, these things going on. And I, I just wonder if this is one of those things where, and the town board hasn't asked us to be involved in this, or asked our opinions about any of this, but if there is a, if this board can have a voice appropriately on this subject, that then gets added to the other towns and agencies within our town to build the, to, to, to build the story that this is something that we are all really, really concerned about. Maybe that's something that we may consider doing, writing a memo or something, but I would hesitate to do that without talking to the town board, because I really don't want to sort of step on their efforts. These things can be very sensitive in how you deal with them politically, which is appropriate. And I think it needs to be done with all due respect and recognition of what other people are doing as well. But I, it is a big, it's really becoming a big deal, and I think it's something that if we don't at least decide that we're going to have a voice on, it wouldn't hurt for us to be informed on it if we, if we think that it's appropriate to do so. And one of, I'm sorry, Bob, one of the things that we might want to do is to, if, if the two members of the advisory board who made that presentation would be willing to come and make the presentation to us, or if they could be compelled to, or asked to do it to a joint meeting of the town and planning board, it's, the presentation was, it was so good. This one fellow had put together an algorithm to, his name, his first name is Nick, he's a member of the advisory board, put together an algorithm, and they gathered all the data for three separate years, 2009, 2013, and, and 2018, of all of the radar data in, in one month out of each of those years, the same month out of each of those years. All of the radar data from, and he said there were like 9,000 pings, nine million pings. And a ping is every time a radar, you know, hits it, it serves every time it hits a plane. He took nine million data points and put it through this algorithm that he wrote, and the graphics he has of the landing patterns and the flight patterns and the altitude and the kinds of aircraft was just stunning presentation. It's graphically, it's very, very, very powerful, not only in terms of the intensity of the flights and the number of flights, but at least also where those flights are and, and how they're sort of intersecting our town more so than almost any other. And it's a, it's a really interesting presentation, I thought it was really well done. So, I'd leave that up to you all to think about.
Did they talk about any changes in these patterns? Because it's my understanding that we are suffering through more.
We are.
Patterns, and that's because the patterns have been changed to our detriment over the years, because my understanding is that it used to be more going out over Connecticut. And another issue that I, I saw in the paper, I don't know if they touched on this, and this is probably in Dick's area, but I understand that they're, they're starting to uncover some real problems with groundwater from the old Air National Guard days, where they had practice routines with foam, you know, fire suppression foam, and they're finding that in many of the wells, the test wells there, that there is a significant.
Not a surprise.
Amount of this in the groundwater. Of course, everyone said it's not impacting the Kensco, of course, because there's a wall that goes somehow beneath all these wells and prevents, it prevents the Kensco reservoir. But in, inside of, I think, two weeks, I've been reading this, inside of two weeks, it seems to be that those numbers have increased rather dramatically in terms of the number But I think these kinds of things are, are really just as, as good as what Westchester puts on it.
I have to just put a cautionary note in here, which is, almost all of the, not almost, all of the flight patterns are really, there's nothing that anybody, that we can do about it, because it's all FAA, and, you know, the only thing you can do is appeal, but there are people who wield a bigger hammer and have more complicated issues than, than just noise.
Yeah, and, and there's, you know, if someone dug into it, there'd be certain, certain aircraft that make more noise than other aircraft, and that could be just the design feature, or it could be that it's an older aircraft, and hence, that would be a consideration or recommendation to ban it, or phase it out faster.
One of the things that's interesting about this is that the, the users of the airport, and they're, people like NetJets is a big user out there, and then there are commercial airlines, there's a lot of private aviation, but they all have contracts with the airport, and the contracts give them landing slots, give them operational protocols that they follow, they actually identify the kind of airport, the, the kind of aircraft that actually they can bring in, and those contracts are starting to come due, and starting to be in a position, the airport's now starting to be in a position where they are in the process of potentially renegotiating contracts. And so, that's one of the areas where some of these things maybe can be addressed, under the radar, no pun intended, of the FAA, because the FAA really doesn't care, so if the, if the carrier wants to make a contract that suits the carrier and suits the airport, the FAA is gonna care, and that gets to the type of aircraft, the, you know, size of engines, when they operate, all of those things, can be up, can be up for negotiation, and may be potentially negotiated in our favor. So, it's very, it's interesting stuff.
It is. Okay, good.
So, thank you.
Yep. All righty. Anything else, anyone? If not, is there a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
All, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.